Yeah. It was not at least thing, it was quite a lot of it.
Okay.
Go ahead and go live.
Sue, you dressed up like you in New York City. You dressed up like you in New York City. This is making the weather here.
Just watch your mics, guys. Watch your mics.
Norma, I will see you flaggle.
All right. In just a minute, we'll get started with the meeting. I am waiting for the, um, the ladies that are working in the tax, the tax team. And I believe you know my source, go find where they are. Someone call the auditor.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, we're starting. Okay. They're calling.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, here, just waiting to call this meeting to order for the tax team. Uh, we're just waiting for the team where the rest of the, the tax team are.
Can you just say that into the mic? We're waiting to call this meeting. Cause it didn't pick up clearly.
Good morning, Williamsburg County citizens, as well as Williamsburg County council members and those who are in the audience with us today. This is a special call meeting that we are conducting today on November 8th, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. This meeting is going to discuss some concerns that we needed to bring forth to council, as well as our citizens. We do have a forum. At this time, we have a microphone check for the, um, our social media outlets. They can hear us good, great. Also, Williamsburg County citizens, you are also encouraged to call in to 1-877-309-2073. The access code is 590-380-589. Again, you can also dial in. Because there's no public hearing at this point, we will not take or entertain any questions at this time from our citizens. However, this is going to be information only. We're going to go ahead and call the special call meeting to order. The invocation will be delivered by Councilman Miller.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for bringing us at this time. We ask you, Heavenly Father, guide us as we go through our county business. We ask you to do all decisions made today. We'll be pleasing to the citizen of Williamsburg County. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Miller. Okay, so our order of business that we will be discussing today is the property tax reassessment review. I have the subject matter experts in-house today, which is our county auditor, who is Ms. Crystal Powell, our tax assessor, who is Ms. Betty Etheridge, as well as our treasurer, Ms. Kimber Cooper, and our tax collector, Ms. Norma Cyrus, is in the house with us today, along with our finance chief, Elizabeth Nelson, is in, in office, in-house today. So, at this time, we're going to go ahead and get, um, one of you ladies can come up and, and discuss with our citizens and council the process of reassessment, because I think it's very important that our citizens understand that this is a reassessment. So, things, and I need you to kind of explain that, because we don't want people to go out there and put information out there stating that the county went up on their taxes without their knowledge. So, if you would give us some clarity on how that reassessment process works and the law that is, um, behind that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Betty Etheridge, county assessor. And, um, pretty much everything starts with my department. We go out and review the properties every five years. This year, we have not raised the values of the properties, um, per se. The, the values that have raised have been due to improvements or a 15% cap release. Properties that are sold that are under the cap, the cap releases, therefore, they can go up 15%, if there's 15% in value there for them to release. If not, they do not go on up 15%. It would only go up and max out that percentage. We only sent out about 8,300 tax notice, uh, I'm sorry, reassessment notices this year, because that was the only properties that were actually affected. And most of that was due to improvements, um, or a reevaluation, um, due to changes, whether it be wear and tear or otherwise. Mostly, it was in transfers. When we do our valuation, years ago, everything was set on an equalization system, and we had to do ratio studies and send back to Department of Revenue. And we still do the ratio studies, but the equalization is pretty much out when they started with the 15% cap. That changed, because even though we may put the full amount of value on the structure, it's under a cap for the taxable value. So, it reduces, if you have a home that is valued at $100,000 before reassessment. And during reassessment, if it were to increase, say, 200,000, for the reassessment period, you would only go up to 115,000. It would be capped at that 15%. The cap was to try to save on taxes for the, for the individuals and to help, um, help the individuals. As we finish the information and send it over to the auditor, then the auditor uses our growth, which is our new construction, and what they call our ATIs, assessable transfers of interest, um, which are not immediate family and, and several other things. It's a long list I won't go into. But for the most part, anything that changes in that order and causes it to go up under the new construction or ATIs is considered growth and is taken away from my totals. Those totals are then turned over to the auditor, and she takes those and works with the millage rates that, that are set by council and the schools and everyone to create your tax bills. On the reassessment notices, I have a copy here. And it, it gives the information on how to file an appeal. They have 90 days, and on the notices that went out this year, they have until January the 5th. And it will explain in this little, this little, um, printout that's actually on the notice itself. The notices that went out says on the front page in about an inch and a half tall print, this is not a tax bill. This gives information on how they file the appeal and what they do. We do need in-depth information. If they disagree on a value, we don't need them to say, "I just disagree on the value." We have to know where that comes from. So, they have to, they have to supply us supporting information. We review everything that comes in, whether it says appeal or I just want to review. We review each one before we do anything. We contact that owner and talk with them, whether it be by phone or by letter, and give them a chance to go back over that information, and if they still disagree, then they can file a formal appeal. All of that is on that printout that goes out to each individual in the mail. Now, once this is done, and their deadline of January the 5th has expired, when they get their tax bill, they will have until January the 15th to file an appeal on the value of the property that was taxed. They can also file on things like their ratio, whether it's under 4% or 6%. If it's under 4% under agricultural, it's a huge discount. The legal residence discount is a pretty good sizable dis- discount. They can also file on things like homestead exemption. Those things can all be filed when they get their tax notice, and they have until January the 15th to file their, the appeal for the tax notice. And it's processed pretty much the exact same way as the 90-day appeal is for the reassessment notice. It's just that the assessment notice is based on value only, and the, um, tax bills are based on the 4%. They can actually appeal the millage. They can appeal the valuation. They can appeal the, um, ratio that it's under, or the classification. So, anything pretty much that's on that tax bill, they can, they can appeal on. Most of our appeals that come in are basically because they did not sign for legal residence, or they did not sign for ag before the notice went out. That's not a problem. They still have until January the 15th. If they come in and they sign up for the agricultural or for the residential and they qualify, then that percentage will be changed, and they will be sent a new bill through the auditor's office. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, I have one. Would you do your, your reassessment, you, you're only assessing the structure, the outside structure, because if improvements and so forth were made otherwise, you would, you would have nowhere to, right? You just do the outside structure, what you were assessing?
Our building permits actually give us that type of information. Whenever the building come, the building permits come to us, we do not go on the inside of the home. However, if you file an appeal, that does give us the right to go inside.
Okay. Okay.
But we do, as a whole, that's all we do, is the outside, any improvements to the land. We pick up concrete patios, porches, fences, that type of stuff, attachments.
Okay, so in regards to how much, uh, to what degree you improve the interior, it will not be reflective on your tax notice?
It depends, because like I say, we have, uh, building permits. When you get the building permit, and if you say, "I'm remodeling my kitchen and it's $30,000,"
Right.
Then we're going to take the classification of that home, and we're going to probably reduce the depreciation factor to accommodate for what you've done on the inside. Now, that does not mean that we're going to jack it back up $30,000.
Right.
We're just going to put it back to where, with that house with a good kitchen, it's going to be back still in that class, so the dollar per square foot would not change. It would change the depreciation factor.
Okay.
Now, if you gutted the inside and it was a total redo, then it could take on a different classification. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Because I know we will be, and have been receiving phone calls from citizens. I guess the first notice they got, they didn't understand. It was like, "Is this our tax bill?" Or, you know, "What is it?" And, um, I think if you can just review that again, because someone like, "Are we supposed to pay this?" And I, we always direct them back to your office, because, you know, our knowledge is...
And, and I even, when I look at the bills, and even though it has the big print that's like a, a, an inch and a half or so across the front that says, "This is not a tax bill", a lot of folks don't catch that. They see it's something from the county, they open it up, and immediately they see figures and think, "This is a tax bill. I don't have that kind of money." It is not a tax bill. It simply says that this is the value that we have on your property, and this is the assessment. And that assessment is what is used by the ratio, whether you are legal residence at 4% or whether you are 6%, which is all other, it's not used as legal residence. It could be used as a rental, or it could just be an empty property that you have sitting there. Those at 6% would not be able to sign back up for 4%. As long as they're not owner occupied, they cannot qualify, unless it's agricultural property. If it's agricultural property, they can sign up for agricultural discount. That discount ranges from $8 to $347 an acre, which is very low. It is a drastic difference in the value of the property, and most of the property that is ag property in the county ranges between $2,000 and $3,200 an acre. We did not raise that this year, because in 19 is what, December 31st of 2019 is where our values are locked in by our tax control date. So, the values that we had back in 19 and the sales for that year from January to December of 19 is what we have to use to create our valuation. We don't do it, use, we don't use our current sales for this year to create the value for the taxes this year. We have that control date, which is every five years. Now, we did ask for an extension, so we are running a year behind. That's not a big deal. A lot of the counties do that, and especially with COVID, a lot of them had to postpone. So, our values came from the 19 sales, and that's what locked it in. Had we used current sales, then yes, our values would have increased, because the tax, the, uh, sales of the property has increased, value-wise. But if you're taking 6% of, just say, the lower side, 6% of the $2,000 an acre versus 4%, and we'll say average, $195 an acre, that is a huge difference. So, it's not just 2%, like it sounds, 6 versus the 4. It's a huge difference, because you're using that use value versus market value. Under agricultural discounts, they can only qualify if it is five acres or more of timberland. There are other reasons that they can qualify, and there are only applications, such as abutting another piece of property that does qualify. So, if you have a 10-acre piece that's under timber and it qualifies, and you had a two and a half acre piece that butts up to it, and it's also timber, it's under the same management program, it's going to be cut for commercial use, then it can qualify. Under commercial, I'm sorry, under, um, cropland, it has to be 10 acres or more. For the cropland to qualify, it has to be planted, or it has to be in a layout program. Now, we will ask, if you have it in a layout program, we may ask for information from the Farm Service Office to show us that it's being laid out. With agricultural use for cropland, there is a clause that says it's got to make $10,000 or more per acre, but there's also another qualifier out there that says that if that property was owned by immediate family member, which would mean mother or father, brother, sister, um, back in 1984, and it qualified for 10 years, in other words, it was actively being farmed for 10 years and received that discount, even though it may be less than the full 10 acres, it will qualify. But you have to prove that you're earning that, so you're going to have to turn in tax forms to show that you're getting that money each year off of that property and that it's actively being farmed. If it's being leased by someone else, then they're going to have to supply those forms. For the most part, the ag has not been a big issue, because most of the folks, they, they do this all the time for their agricultural, um, farming and whatnot, so that's, that information is pretty easy. Just a little information on, on signing up for those. The ag, the, uh, legal residence, of course, it has to be owner occupied. It can be under certain types of contracts, but they have to be done so that it is pretty much a promissory note that has to go through foreclosure to be able to, uh, taken, be taken back. So, if it goes into default, it has to go through a foreclosure process. If it does not, then it does not qualify for legal residence discount, because there's no actual owned interest in that. You have to have an equity interest in the property to be able to qualify. Any other questions? Sir, Mr. Miller?
How is, uh, abandoning, or, or, or older houses? How is that taxes? There has to be some electricity running there, or?
If, if the home is abandoned, if it's reported to us that it is abandoned, and there is electricity in the home, then we continue to keep it on the books. If there's no electricity in the home, it still stays on the books, because at any point in time, just being abandoned means that there's nobody living in it. If the home is run down, the falls, the floors are falling in, the ceiling's caving in, and it's not livable, then what we do is we go, we send somebody out from our office and look at that property. We take photographs of it, we make notes on it, and then we do what we call no value. So, we show that there was a structure on it, but we remove the value from the tax bill. If it cannot be used for what it was built for, then we take off the value, unless there are certain, there are certain circumstances through codes that you can go in and remove things like the kitchen sinks and the toiletry, and you can use it for storage. So, in a case like that, the value per square foot would drop to more of a storage-type value. And they would be allowed to use it as storage, so therefore, it would still be taxed. But if it is a livable structure, and it's just vacant, then it is still taxed. It would be taxed actually at the 6% as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, quick question. So, am I to understand the reassessment, it occurs every five years?
Correct.
So, that means that the property taxes that are paid does not change until it's reassessed, if there's any improvements?
No, ma'am. If there's an improvement, the year that we pick up, in other words, if you did a building permit this year, and you completed your structure by the end of the year, December 31st, it does not go on for this year, it's picked up for the following year, but that would change your tax bill. You would be, that, that, uh, new construction or improvement would go on for the following year. Reassessment is, is basically the county-wide reassessment, so where we try to check the majority of the county, if not all the county.
And then my other question, I don't know if this is your department, probably not. Is there still a payment plan in place for people to pay their taxes, if they wanted to pay it long and long throughout the year?
That would be through the treasurer.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Is it possible, and I guess I can ask you this off-air, is it possible that the residences, residents that we've changed, I think you said was 82,000? Or how many notices you said went out?
83, it's a little over 83, 100, 100.
8,300 that went out, that we can show a comparison? Because apparently, the first, the reassessment was done when, in 2015? That was when?
Correct.
One of your assessments was done, now it's five years later.
Right.
I think what it is, is people, to help them understand, and I'll get with you to try to, so we can publish this right, to where we can maybe look at an example of, of a year, someone five years ago and comparing, to comparing them to today, you know, what it's going to look like today. So, I'll work with, um, the media marketing team and you to try to make sure we get that information out in the right manner.
Dr. Wright, we can do that, but it's going to be an individual basis-type situation, because like I say, it could be improvements to the property. It could be that there has been more depreciation added to the property, but yet they've improved a certain portion.
Okay.
So, some of these things, when the caps are released on it, it actually allows it to go up to assume more of the actual value. However, depreciation factors also push some of that back down, so some of those that could release the 15% are not going to release it, even though they may have more than the 15%. Once that's released, then your depreciation brings it back down a little bit.
Okay. I got you. Yeah, so this is going to be more individualized, obviously, because everybody's situation may be different.
It's different.
Okay. Good deal. And, uh, again, I just want to make sure that we, we definitely let our citizens know that this is not something that we push forward, that your taxes be, become reassessed, that this is actually, uh, law, that this is done. I don't know which law governs you guys to have to do this every so often, but I know it ain't county law.
No, it's state.
I just want to be clear.
It's state law. It is state law.
I just want to be clear. I know I keep repeating it, but you know, we get those calls, "The county didn't went up on our taxes," and they, that was their fault, they wanted to do this. It is not our responsibility, um,
Correct.
To tell the, the legal, the legal authorities over this decision to do this. That's all.
And Dr. Wright, I will say this, um, to explain a little bit further into this. As far as the, the dollar per square foot for classification of homes, we did not go, we did not increase anything, because there was no justification for it. We have to have enough sales throughout the county to justify the increase of a dollar per square foot, whether it's 50 cent or a dollar or $5 a square foot. We have to have enough sales in those type of classes to be able to increase that class, or to drop that class. There was neither. So, we did not change any of those classes, and under the ag, we had a lot of the agricultural property in 19 that was actually selling for what we had on it, or a little bit less. Like I say, if we went with what's being sold now, it would be a lot different, but everything was locked in in 19. We do this every five years, but our five-year term never changes. So, if we extend it a year, which we did this time, we actually lose a year, so in four years, we will have our, our next reassessment. Okay?
All right. Any other questions from Director Etheridge? No? All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our, um, the next person that's supposed to come and speak is our auditor, is Crystal Powell, and she will be accompanied by our previous auditor, Ms. Sally Muzon.
Good morning, everyone.
Hey. Good morning.
I'm Crystal, the auditor, and this is Ms. Sally Muzon. Previous auditor. I've got some handouts of...
If you guys feel comfortable, you can remove your masks. If you can't, um, can't speak and if they can't hear you, they'll let you know if they can't hear you. Thank you.
Well, she's giving those out. I'd just like to say, um, that this is for, the first year that, that Crystal has had to work with the reassessment. And, um, our...
Because I'm not sure of your title.
Um, Ms. Nelson asked that if I could come in and work with Crystal, since it, it can be complicated when, well, on Betty's end and on the auditor's end. And, um, this, this is a booger bear. And I was putting it gently. So, Chris called, and I came in, and there were times I was able to work from home, and that worked out real well by signing into the system. She had some notes and spreadsheets that I had back from the 2015 reassessment. And, um, sometimes she even, I, I even had trouble of going back and saying, "Now, what did I do here?" But, um, Crystal and I did, once we thought we had a good handle on it, we called the Department of Revenue. Crystal called, and, and they have been excellent in, uh, communicating back and forth. But she called, and we did go to Columbia, and we would met with, um, three of the members of the Property Tax Division. And, um, they, we had other questions on the personal property, boat motors, automobiles...
Right.
Airplanes.
Utilities.
But when they looked at our figures that we had for, um... But when they looked at our figures that we had for personal property, that stood out to them because the figures that we had carried showed that there was a 15% in...
That was real property.
In overall, in the real estate. And so we came back, and the tax assessor has worked with us daily, updating us on, as she is able to update her records with the staff that she has. So we feel like we have a good formula. But as Sandy Houck, who has been with the Department of Revenue for almost 50 years, he stated toward the end, and they had a, I think it's called a...
Webinar.
Webex, webinar, and then had the handouts that I think she has provided some of the pages to y'all. So as Sandy Houck said, the one that had been there almost 50 years, that the formula for figuring what the millage will be when you pull all your figures together, the formula's simple. It's pulling all the figures, and they update constantly. So you are constantly trying to update to use the most current figures. And she would get certifications from the Department of Revenue, business personal property. And so she has finally just said, okay, Friday, we're going to use these figures and run with them. You know, there are going to be changes all the time. People don't have the boat that's been stolen, or the airplane's been sold. People appeal the property of their business personal property, so it is...
Changes every day.
Changes every day. So you can pull the formula that D.O. requires. And as Dr. Wright said, this is not something the county says we're going to do.
Let me get that big sheet.
This is Section 1237, 251, calculation of rollback millage. So this isn't going by the state legislative that was passed. And if you look at the bottom, I think on page 14...
I didn't give them this page.
Okay. All right. The formula is simple. You take your prior year taxes that were levied. That's easy, we know what the figure is. Then you divide it by the new reassessment value. And that was when she was constantly pulling figures every other day, keying them back into a spreadsheet. And this formula basically tells what the county can go up or can...
Or down.
Or down. Crystal's home did not go up in value. Let's say, take it, for instance, my home. Let's say if it's valued at 100,000, it did go up 15%. So the assessment went up to 115,000. So yes, we will be paying more taxes. And we did see that many of the homes did go up the 15%. So y'all will be questioned. My taxes went up. So did you provide them with the...
The value, yeah.
Tax numbers?
Yes, the very, let's see, I think it's the last page of your packet. It shows a sample bill, this one. And it shows that it's the same up top as the bottom, so it's not two separate numbers. It's the same up top as the bottom. So if you want, just look at the top. It separates how much the hospital, the debt, you know? It all is separated, and who gets what amount. So it's not like the county's getting all the money. This shows who gets how much, and it's distributed to those entities. I just wanted to give you a sample of that, so the ones that's not quite sure how that works. It'll show you that. We do collect it, but it gets dispersed to those entities.
Yes, Madam Auditor, I think that that is a big misconception when people say that their taxes went up and they've been going up. It's not, does not go into the county's general fund or the county's rule fire or debt services. We collect for everybody, and it goes, we have to give them a check back once we collect for it. And I think people think that we keep that money, and we don't. That money goes back out to the other agencies that we're reporting for or we're calculating for or receiving funds for.
Yes, you're right. And then if you look at the first one that's colorful, it's the county one. And where it's got the first line in the yellow, that's taking the 2021 tax year percentage that the county can go up by the state, what they are allowed the state for us to go up. So I took that base assessed millage and added in that cap, which gave it, it's the 11330 plus the 1.3, which gave the county 114.60 in millage. If you look under where it says rounding per D.O.R., all right? But the county has not used 18, 19, or 20 percentages that they could go up by the state, that they say that we could go up, but the county didn't go up. So then I have to take that in consideration, those allowable increases by the state, and each one is added up to get the final amount of 121.8 that we could go up that we did not use. And then you'll see that we've got 6.8 in the bank for those years that we did not use. So I cannot set the millage, it's the county council that has to set the millage. This is just something to show you your options. Any questions on that? And I've got the county, the tech, rule fire, and the hospital.
So let me ask you a question, and I don't know if you guys are prepared for this question or not. So for example, if the county were to take advantage of what is legally allowable, and they did the 6.80, what would that look like as an increase for a home value of $100,000?
The overall, the 1.2, the 121.8?
Mm-hmm.
The overall one?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have my calculator.
Sorry.
We have started a spreadsheet and just used a general $25,050 debt. We weren't comfortable in bringing. We wanted to go back and review the figures, but those certainly can be provided
Okay.
to all those involved here.
All right, thank you.
And we actually went up, started the $25,000 value, home value, at 25,000, showed what the taxes were last year for county, and then showed...
What they could be for this year.
Okay.
Would you like to do the whole amount of what's in the bank, the 121.8?
I think we'd like to see the 1.2, 18, and whatever's in the bank.
Okay.
You can see two different.
If you take the 115, the 121.8, subtract the 115, that leaves the 6.8 in the bank.
Okay.
So you're saying that we can increase the millage up to, the maximum amount we can increase it up to is the 121.8? And at that time, then we would compute the figures, like if a house was worth $100,000, then we would do that equation based on the millage of 121.80?
If that's what y'all want to see.
No, I'm just saying hypothetically. If we wanted to go to the max, we have that room to compute the value of a house, $100,000, with the equation of the highest millage, if we decided to do that.
Yes.
121.80, and that's what we would increase the taxes to?
Yes.
Okay. And if I understood correctly, millage has not been increased for the last four years, is that correct?
No, it's been more than that, several, several years.
How many years?
Probably at least 10 years, I think they had to go up.
At least 10 years.
For a legal suit that we had with, the county was sued 10 years ago, or longer than that. But actual increase in any millage was probably about 15 years ago, if I'm not mistaken, or even longer, probably 18 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Longer. I think it went up 10 years for a lawsuit that the county had, I wasn't here. It had to go up for something, led you, between you and Miss Sally?
I don't remember that.
Well, we weren't here, Crystal.
It is, I think in 2011, before the 2012 reassessment was implemented, that it was 117.2. And due to the, all these figures that are combined to come up with the figure for the formula for rollback that the county actually went from 117.2 down to 115. So I think it's been that way, like, I'll say, about 10 years. But as the Hammond asked, yes, we can go back and create spreadsheets to show the difference. But then again, you've got to remember that many of these homes and businesses, that their assessed value increased 15%. So they're already going to be paying more taxes. And then the more we use, as they say, from the bank from the past years, that the, what could be used was not used, that the millage rate stayed the same.
So that would be hit with a double whammy.
And since, excuse me, our treasurer and tax collector, because her tax seller's coming up, you know, they're anxious, as y'all say, they are receiving calls, calls after calls, people coming in. You know, I didn't get my tax bill, I need a copy. So I don't know how the county, I should, but I don't, how many readings it would take if you decided to vary from the 115 mills that are set? How many readings or what it would take if you decided to change from the 115 mills?
And that would make a bear in all, because I only have an extension till November the 19th. That doesn't mean they have to have the bill in their hand, it just means they have to be in the system. So if y'all do decide to change, and it takes so long to have all those readings to up your millage, I've got to ask for another extension if it goes over the 19th.
Okay. But that's something to think about, council members. I wouldn't say you need to think about that this second, but this would be a good opportunity for you all to ask as many questions as you're going to need. Again, as we said, you know, we have not reached back in a while to help with any of the nuances with the increase of charges and increase of expenditures that the county has faced over the last 10 years. And as I stated a number of times, the cost of bread has gone up from 10 years ago until now. So members of council will have to make that decision as to what direction they're going to go in and how it's going to impact the county long-term.
Well, for the auditor's information, and the treasurer's, and the tax collectors, and the tax assessors, it really affects all the offices. If you meet and you decide that you are going up to any of these options, which would, you know, would increase it from the 115, 115 mills, then the treasurer, Ms. Cooper, and auditor would need to know the timeframe because the 19th is getting close. And I'm assuming, Ms. Cooper, that they would allow for a third extension?
They're asking for a third or four. We have to contact Mr. Paradise to see if that's allowable.
And does this have to be reacted on today, like now? Is this something that we can...
As soon as possible.
Okay. And this is a one-time opportunity, or is it something that can be done?
This is what's available as of now. And I'm including this year's allowable increase, the percentage. But you'll have another allowable increase for the next year by the state if you decide to go up.
Okay. I think what would help council a lot is to probably look at the comparables, if you all can do the spreadsheet, with the new numbers that the assessor has talked about. Because obviously, you don't want, they're not going to make a decision that is based on really hurting the citizens out, hurting the citizens of the county. However, we do have to be understanding to the fact that even though we don't want to do certain things, we are forced just by the cost price index that things are going up. So we have to make decisions. Madam Treasurer?
We do need to make note that the duty on collections will not change because they are by law. And we have to be citizens in these 30 days for that first meeting. So if you all are looking for another extension, keep that in mind, the duty does not change.
Okay. So we are on a very, very, very tight window, members of council. And a tight window within the next couple of meetings that we're going to have to call probably quickly.
And also, as the auditor stated, yes, the bills have to be on the system, not necessarily in the citizen's hand. Keep in mind, we always send our citizens bills, that's what a lot of them go by. Even if it's just a complimentary notice to them, it is only fair that we send those notices to our citizens.
Yeah, we do still mail them, it's just that they have to be in the system that day.
I agree, okay. So we're going to have to, and our deadline to get any information to you? So right now, if we stay at where we are, you're good to go. We can process everything and go with it.
If you stay in at the 115.
Mm-hmm.
After you hear from the municipalities and the schools.
Yes, I have to also hear from the schools and the municipalities because I know the municipalities, they have, if they're going to change their rate, they have to set a first meeting, then they have to wait six days to have their second budget meeting. So that's kind of pushing it there as well.
Mm-hmm. Wow, okay. No problem. Any other questions? I just want to make sure we're all going to just know that we're going to have to hurry along this process. Yes, Madam Treasurer?
Can I hate to keep jumping in, just on the finance side. Revenue collections are going to be down this year. The chief of finance is in here because revenue collections, last year in November, it will be down tremendously for this November. So that's another thing that you guys need to be thinking about. Because the notices are going out late, revenues will be down in the month of November. I mean, probably December as well, because most citizens, once they get that bill, especially our older population, they're ready to pay it. And so just keep in mind, as far as revenues.
Yeah, and that's going to also, members of council, that's going to affect our projections for our financial projections, simply because our TAN is usually just utilized just as tax anticipation notice, and we're used to getting those funds in by November, December. And if we push that date out any further, it's going to impact our ability to pay our bills, pay our employees, because we don't have the money in-house to take care of that.
The TAN does...
That's right. And then we also, you know, have to start paying back the TAN. And if we don't have the money to do it, then you all know, that can be proven to be disastrous.
So would y'all need the spreadsheet first?
I think if you can get that spreadsheet to them, I mean, even if we have to call a series of meetings and, you know, within the authorized timeframe, unfortunately, we'll have to get it done. we'll have to get it done, because this is obviously important, so, I mean, I could call these special call meetings so we can work this out.
And the deadline is November nineteenth, is that, is that correct?
Ma'am?
Okay.
All right, any other questions? But yes, spreadsheets would be good, that way they can see what the impact is, along with the reassessment information, and as best as you can. And I know everything is not gonna, every person is not gonna be the same, I know you guys are just gonna go on a base, you know, what is the base amount, and that's, you know, at least give them some, some opportunity to see what we need to get done. All right, we'll see what they have.
Since we're starting to get it to them tomorrow.
Turn your mic on.
Excuse me, could you all give us an approximate time as to when you think you may be able to get those spreadsheets to us?
Sometime tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Because we've already started one, so we can just kinda start filling it in.
Okay, very fine.
And so are we asking for an extension as of today, or are we waiting on the decision?
That's to me, or, I guess it depends on how fast they can give me yes or no, this is the millage rate they're gonna use.
Just to wait for a decision from the council, when I'm here.
Uh huh. We don't need no more extensions. No. Any other questions?
Any do come up, I'm in and out of the office, we have the email, and so we would respond. It's a lot to take in. It's, it hasn't changed since the one in two thousand and fifteen, but I have forgotten a lot in six years, so it's a, booger bear's still out there.
Right. Well, in spite of what we're all up against, I do wanna thank our tax team for their support and their continued push to get this done, along with our finance team. We appreciate what you guys are doing out there, we know it's not easy, and trust me, when you get us the numbers, it ain't gonna be easy for us either, because we're gonna have to make some decisions. So we'd just like to thank you all for all your hard work, our auditor, our past auditor, our assessor, our collector, and our treasurer, so we just wanna say thank you, and Ms. Nelson and her team for working with us to get this process done. And, you know, congratulations for at least getting the assessment completed with the amount of staff that she actually has right now.
Ms. Nelson has jumped in, she's helped us, you know, just send a spreadsheet, you know, can we simplify it, so, and she's met with us, so, um, the team has worked together real well.
Yeah.
As always.
Thank you, Ms. Sally, for coming out of retirement again, to help us out.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Any other questions? If not, we're gonna go ahead, I need a
Second.
It's been properly moved in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed, it's the same, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Windsor County Council, as well as Windsor County citizens. Thank you, Madam Coroner, for joining us today.
Ms. Siders, hold up.